To order at seven oh two, everyone stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So in front of you, you might notice that your agenda looks a little bit different. And that is because select person Stanek brought to my attention that he would like to try this agenda to see if it fits our, if it fits in, if it works. And I said, sure, we could try it for the first meeting. And let's see if it flows with our meeting or not. Okay? This is a consent agenda, right? So, no, it's not.
What is a consent agenda in this context?
I can answer that. A consent agenda is actually under Roberts as it's known, called a consent calendar. And cities, towns, villages, you know, who typically have a heavy workload with items on their agendas, a large number of items that are non-controversial, typically that have committees that take up the site for the meetings will have, will cause a consent calendar to be created. That is something where one board will take care of numerous items typically without any, or without any discussion. It would give members the opportunity to pull items and remove items from the consent calendar if they ask by simple request of one individual. You cannot do one though, under Roberts, unless you have a special rule of the body authorizing you do a consent calendar. You can't just do one without a rule. You have no such rule, so you have to create by resolution authorization to have a consent calendar. And that's your call whether you think that's workable or not. If it does cut down on public participation and discussion, that's your call whether you want that.
Would that streamline things like appointments?
It would eliminate any discussion on the record of appointments. Basically, if this was a consent calendar, someone would move the consent calendar, you'd vote on it, you'd be done, there'd be no discussion, a single minute of appointment would affect three hundred.
If I may, at the appropriate time, Madam, for a select woman.
Well, I, all right, we did the Pledge of Legions. We're not going to do the roll call, but we can go into public comment. Oh, do we want to, let's add to this, the agenda, I can't add to this agenda, can I?
What's up?
Directly, all right, let's add to the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda to discuss.
So moved.
Motion by Chris Bowen.
Second.
Second by Al Barone. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Guys, open it up for discussion.
If I may, again, I just suggested that we might consider the agenda item, consent agenda. We've utilized it at the Board of Education level for several years, and I've been on other boards and commissions elsewhere where we've utilized it. It's a good opportunity, as Council mentioned, to use it for non-controversial ministerial-type actions. For example, approving a refund from the tax collector to a taxpayer where there's no real issue. Somebody overpaid $300, you simply vote on it, part of the consent agenda, as well as other items. Any individual member of the board has the right to remove the item from the agenda, consent agenda, and add it to discussion. I just think it's a nice vehicle, nice tool to use in the agenda in a meeting. You know, we don't have to do it, but if we wish to do it, we could pass a resolution.
Any other discussion?
Would that go to, like, the ordinance committee? Would that be necessary?
I don't think that's necessary.
No.
I would do it by resolution.
Any other, Bruno, sorry?
Yeah, so, um, so I, I'm not, I'm not seeing the need for it with the way we do business on this board. I think that reviewing tax abatements, appointments, that's something that we've always gone down the list, speaking of a roll call type thing, we go through the appointments and we can rebless each appointment. And that's, to me, that's more transparent. And I believe that people have always preached transparency in government. I know that Karen used to talk about that a lot too, Fred, with, we should always have people's votes marked in the minutes to know how they voted on certain things, so it just doesn't say seven oh, oh, or five two one. And I, and I kind of like that idea. So putting it in a consent agenda and having to draft a new, need a rule of the body because we don't have the law, I'm just not seeing it. I'm not, I'm not seeing the, I think it's a nice suggestion. I don't, I don't think this board requires it. I, I enjoy the back and forth and the discussion about appointments and seeing who got the tax abatements to make sure I don't have a conflict with a family member. I always abstain. So I, I don't think that, you know, our meetings aren't as long for events. For example, we usually get our meetings done in an hour and a half on average. And I think that's because of our efficiency. And I know that that consent agenda sounds like it would make us more efficient, but I, I think we're pretty efficient as we are. If we had a laundry list of items, I'd probably back you on it. But I'm not, I'm just not seeing the value add.
I concur. I don't see how it, how it adds any value to our present agenda structure. I don't even see a need for it. You know, why do roll call, what do we need roll call for? We don't need the time of approval of the last, the last Board of Select Persons meeting. We're splitting hairs here.
We do, we do approve our minutes from the last, the last minute.
Right, but you don't need the time.
If I may respond again?
Yeah.
Again, this evening, we, you've placed, or the decision was made to add appointments on the consent agenda. I agree with Mr. Bruno, appointments should be not on the consent agenda. But we could reserve the consent agenda for the future, for other items that, like I said, tax refunds. Al disagrees with me. I think something like that, if there's an issue, a particular refund that you want to take off the agenda, you take it off the agenda and put it on the regular agenda. It's something to retain. That's my feeling. Roll call, the only reason I like a roll call is because with remote meetings, watching meetings, don't always know who's, who's at the meeting, at least if it's articulated. And plus, I've often seen that minutes are missing somebody who was present at the meeting. So if there's a roll call, everybody answers present, the clerk, secretary knows everybody's present, and it's also on recorded, part of the recorded record. That's just some of the suggestions that I was making. That's all. But, you know, the consensus is otherwise. I'm the new kid on the block. I don't want to disrupt everything, so.
And it's not about disrupting and the new kid. We're always open for new ways of thinking, new ways of doing things, and I, I never want to shoot down somebody's idea. I always want to listen, I always want to hear. Go ahead, Chris.
I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it was great to, but I think I'd, I'd like to see if there's a need first. So respectfully, I concur with my other colleagues that I think the way that we're doing it currently is sufficient. Because at the end of the day, the onus is still on us to review everything.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Well, with the point about the roll call, I'm not, I'm not seeing that as a, as a bad idea then, after what Fred said. I would want to think about it and like Chris saying, is, is there a need, and what is the value add to that? Because we know our secretary, she just, she does a great job. She captures when, what people are present, when they come in, if they come in late, she puts the time in plans at the top of the minutes. If they come in late, that's, that's just how, most minutes that I've seen. But I can see how on Zoom that would have been good, because you want to know who's there. Because sometimes people just come in and you don't know they're there, and hey, I'm here at the meeting and nobody knows who it is, if their camera's not working. But now that we're back in person, I'm not so sure. I'm kind of, I'm kind of torn on that one.
I don't, but do we even have the mechanism for some people to be remote during our regular meetings?
No.
Nope. And I think it's, then I think that is the decider then. If we had mixed meetings where some people were on Zoom and others, then I would see a more, more of a value add.
So you're seeing it as something to consider in the future if we have to go
If we have to.
On Zoom again to meetings where we can't meet in person?
Yes.
If the numbers keep rising.
Right.
Then.
That would make sense. I could see that.
Then, then absolutely, I would absolutely say we use this if we have to go via Zoom. But while we're in person, then I would say we go back to our.
We just keep it.
Yeah.
Generally, anyone speaking at a Zoom, we've all been, we've all been involved in them through various boards that we've been on, not only this board, but most times when we do have a Zoom meeting before someone speaks and is recognized by the chair, they usually say Pat Lombardi speaking, or Fred Stanek speaking, or whomever it is. But I see no problem with it, with a roll call for Zoom meetings in the future.
Okay. While we have this discussion.
Yes, thank you for discussing these issues.
Yes, I mean, that's, that's what we do. We discuss things because we all have to work together, right? To make sure where everybody's coming from. And with that, if everybody's good with that, we'll, the next meeting, we'll go back to our normal agenda.
We'll be, one, one more thing, Emery, because there's another thing about approval of agenda. So I wanted, I wanted somebody to speak to that, because I don't, I'm not really sure what that means, what it is.
I'm, I'm a little confused on that myself.
Go ahead, War.
I read that to be mostly if there was something you objected to on the consent agenda, there's another item below for items removed. So approving everything that's on the consent agenda, that's how I got the connection.
I kind of would defer to Mr. Stanek, the select person Stanek on this, because he uses, they use this in the Board of Ed. So what would that mean?
We don't use approval of agenda in the Seymour Board of Ed, but another town where I represent a board does use it, and it's used to add to the agenda early on, so that if anyone wants to think about a new item, it's not just added immediately and discussed later on, it's added early on. Again, it's just a suggestion.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else?
I'm not vested in that, I'm.
You can, under one, two, twenty-five, Stan, add an item anytime during the regular meeting.
Two thirds, yeah.
So you cannot restrict someone to take out the item at the beginning. You may want to, but you can't.
It's just the policy of this particular board.
Okay.
Just like you folks have a certain way of doing business, other boards have other ways of doing business.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. Now I'm clear on it.
Is there any other questions before we move on?
Just, just that, this is kind of picky on, I don't really, I mean, I like Roman numerals and everything, but I don't think they're necessary for our agenda. I kind of like the numerical, regular numerical. Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right.
I do not suggest the Roman numerals.
Okay.
So you can't, you can't point fingers at.
Yeah, because I was like, I don't know what that is.
Have to get out my calculator, figure out what the numbers are.
I'm a Jets fan. What's a Super Bowl?
Exactly.
When you, when you issue his next paycheck, do it in Roman numerals.
Dana's going to love that one. Roman numerals.
His next paycheck, do the Roman numerals. Yeah, that works out.
She's going to get right on that for you, Rock.
So we're open the floor to public comment. Is there any public comment? State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Paul Roy, Katie Washington Avenue, also Chairman of the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame Committee. And tonight I wanted to inform your members of our inductees that will be inducted to Hall of Fame in April. We're doing one in April, the April 30th. We're doing it then because we weren't able to have one over the last couple of years. We're doing a makeup in April and another one in November. Okay? So, yeah, it's pretty ambitious, but we, we were pretty much along to this class before we stopped meeting.
Okay.
So we've got a pretty good class coming up. Certainly, I remember all the names. I don't know if anybody else will. Unless you heard it from your family. But anyway, from the class of 1959, Jim Taradine.
Can you spell his last name? I'm, I'm sorry, I know we really can't, but can you spell his last name for the record for Marsha?
Jim Taradine, T A, T A R A D I N E.
Okay.
From 1959. Fred will know the next person, it's Jim Anderson from 1972. Fred, I'm not trying to give away your age.
He's my classmate.
Okay, so then, let's see, I'll try to go in order here, from the class of 1974, Melissa Tottenham Rose. Some people know Melissa from being an educator. Okay? And then from 1983, Tim Renison. He, Tim was, and this year, we've gotten away from the main sports that have been played in, over the years, with Jim Anderson being cross country and track, and, and Tim Renison as well. So, you know, we're, we're doing a little bit better, getting more information on other athletes that, you know, everyone's going to know about.
So, Miss.
1984, Bobby LaRoe. He played all three sports, football, baseball, basketball. And from 1994, Mike Mudry Jr. Okay? So those are the inductees. Now, we typically give away an award to someone who has made outstanding contributions to the, the sports at Seymour High School, not necessarily an athlete, but anybody else who made some kind of a contribution. And again, we've gone back to a retired educator, and this, this year, the award is going to go to Ray Nekio. And I got to, I know you know Ray, from our committee, as soon as his name was brought up, it was unanimous. So we didn't even really have to discuss it. So that's what the class is going to look like. We, we've, we're going to have our December meeting. We're not going to meet in January because of the weather and some, we have some, people are, let's say, people are older than myself, so that sometimes it's a little tricky for them to get out. So we will start in February. We'll get more information out about, about the banquet. It's going to be a Bill Bianca, like I said, on April 30th. And certainly, everyone is going to be attending. Tickets will be going on sale. It'll be in the paper. And it'll probably be on the website of the high school.
We, so we have the voices in the valley, Indy here tonight. Do you mind if they put the names out and when they do?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
We've contacted all the recipients. Everybody knows, and they have, they have contacted us back.
Okay.
So, and I usually do give a press release. I haven't gotten through yet. We just got, got, got this stuff going, so, yeah, it's okay for the, that's not a problem. Not a problem.
Just wanted to check.
So any questions? Any? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There any other public comment? Any other public comment without that? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 19th regular meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Pat Lombardi, second by Chris Bowen. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Knows? Abstains?
I will abstain.
Marsha, please note Fred Stanek's abstention. It is four zero one. Chair votes out. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, Chairwoman, if I may ask Council, I was not a member of the board at the time these minutes were recorded, so I think an abstention is in order. But in the future, if one of us misses a meeting, do we have to abstain, or if we make ourselves familiar with the minutes, we can vote to approve or disapprove?
Good question, the latter, if you can.
Okay. Thank you.
It's in Roberts rules.
Well, just, some people abstain. I would abstain. Okay. Okay, so, next one is reports. And the next one is the first select woman's, I'm trying to go off of two different agendas here. Select woman's report, actually, it's actually Economic Development Consultant Sheila O'Malley. Sheila has started working with us six days ago, so we just wanted to give her a chance to put some stuff together. She will present at our next meeting in December, which is December 21st, 22nd. Thank you. Because that's a Wednesday, right? Correct, because we don't have our meeting on a Tuesday. December 22nd. Will you be here? Do I have the time?
And, and after that, if you were.
So Sheila will give, I can tell you that, without taking the wind out of Sheila's sails right now, she has spoken to, I can say how many? Many people. She has spoken to many people. And there's many things she's working on. Okay, so she'll, she'll be here for the next one. Discussing, the discussion and possible action regarding online tax payment agreement. In your agenda packet, you have a point and pay e-payment service agreement that Dana Flack, our tax collector, will gladly discuss with everybody and speak about.
Dana Flack, tax collector. Point and Pay is our current credit card, debit card, e-check collection company that we use. We've been using it for a few years now. This is an extension of it, an upgrade of the contract. They will now, so we have different things that they're operating. You can set up the payment date. Like if you were doing it online at home, like banking, you'll be able to have a dashboard where you can live in for future things on, you can get repetition payments. You can also change if you wanted to have tax awards or with it. You can get your history, which you can still get now. You can get statements, you can get, create a profile and stuff like that. They can also, this is in addition, they also, right now, on our, where we have it, if you have paid with your debit card, right now, we've only been taking dues and debit, for three dollars and ninety-five cents. If you use a MasterCard debit, you end up getting whacked with two and a half percent fee.
Wow.
Yes. Well, that's the same as the credit card. We need to understand it. And it defaults at the credit card. People get confused that they don't go down. Well, I wanted to do pay with the debit card, then we have to go and void it.
So the drop down's not showing up as easily, if you're saying?
Right now, that's how it is.
Okay, oh, that's how it is.
When we sign up, if you sign up, if you sign up for the upgrade, it will have credit card, it will have debit card, and it will have e-check.
The three options will be right there on?
Right there. Invisibility. And they will also now accept MasterCard for three dollars and ninety-five cents.
Oh, good, okay.
So we won't have to deal with any of that issue as well.
Nice.
And that's all free of charge. We did look into another, another company contacted us and we went to a demo with them. They wanted a hundred dollars a month from us. We're doing basically the same stuff that we've been having all along. And with our, when you pay online with a check that comes to us, you have to look it up and print out a bill because it's just a check that comes to us with nothing, nothing on it. They wanted to charge fifty dollars a month to review those and fifty cents per check to process. But this other company does it for free. That part of it, they, we can handle that part of, of the online checks because they go to the lockbox or they come here and just, if it goes to the lockbox in Hartford, they can't process it because there's no bill with it. So it gets rejected and they overnight it twice and we just process it manually like we have in the past. But it was something that we were looking at as well, sort of different options, and if there are new stuff, then it seemed pretty good. In the old days, they said it was free, so it's like free is for me, that's all.
Free is for me, yeah.
If you have any questions, and I know there are.
All right.
We will be able to generate reports off of it too, and stuff like that. And then they do email reminders for registrations and, and stuff like that. It sounds like it's much better thing. And they'll look like I said, that people can do what they want with it. They'll be able to, down the road, they'll be able to do the hello wallet, does that make sense?
Yep.
They'll be able to do that and a few other things that they want to do, choose to get to.
So it sounds like that the Seymour Tax Collection Office is coming up in the?
Yeah, this, this is, we've been doing, we've been doing probably twelve to thirteen years now, we've been doing credit cards.
Right, but it just seems like it's becoming more advanced.
Well, more, we're, we're people doing it more and more, yes, utilizing it more. And it'll be a lot easier to navigate with it and stuff like that for people that do it.
Any select board have any questions?
If I may?
Absolutely. You'll see, Mr. Stanek, that this is a fun board.
I reserve comment.
Until the end of the night first.
Dana, you mentioned that this is an, an extension of an existing contract.
Correct.
However, the, this document talks about the initial term being three years of this contract.
Right, so it would be like, the other ones, I don't know, I don't even know exactly which date it expires, the other one. But this would be an upgrade, we would sign this, and this would be in effect for three years.
It will be in effect for three years. Any way to negotiate it down to one year as an initial term? Just in case you became dissatisfied with the company?
I've been happy with them all along.
Okay, it renews automatically.
Like I said, the other company that pursued us, he was very aggressive in pursuing us. And we watched the demo and stuff like that, and some of the things in the demo were good, some weren't.
Okay.
And we had questions, and I didn't like the idea of the, the other company being paying, and this company's been great.
Okay.
And we, like I said, it's, people had asked for the service. We wanted to provide a service with less work on our end and no cost to the town. We wanted to, if you want to use it, you use it. If you don't, you don't. There are fees, we tell you to get money where to get, you know, some of the cash or payment. And we do that. And they, they've been paying online. We have not been taking payments in, with the cards in the office.
So by, by way of clarification, this is not an extension, this is a new contract, an upgrade of what?
It's an upgrade.
Okay. And you're very satisfied with the services?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have, once in a while, we have a switch, but they, they, they do it right away. They, you know, sometimes it's not available, but they tell you they have notifications from other places that weren't. I haven't had any issues with them. You know, they, you know, they've responded to it pretty quickly, like I said. We do the online, we do what they call the IVR through the phone and stuff. Another company, which was that other company that pursued us way back when, they wanted to charge on that to us. They just gave it to us for free. I mean, they said, oh, we'll just, we'll just add it up and do it then. We don't like it because it's very, because when they call, a lot of people don't know their account numbers. And they say it's personal property. They want it to card. So they say, oh, yeah, it's not personal property. So it's, we have to do a lot of detective work with it to try to keep it running. And the only information we have is, is the phone number. Where, when they do pay regularly with the credit card or debit card or the e-check, we get their email, we get their phone number, and we get their address. But when they use the IVR system, all we do is get a phone number. So we end up having to call them. If we can't figure it out what the account is, we have to call the people up and say, what are you trying to pay? Once in a while, we do have to void this, because for some reason, we get somebody from way out of Illinois.
Seymour, Indiana.
Some, somewhere, anywhere. We, we, it, it's not even that. It's a totally different town that they were trying to pay. And like, he says, you can't really identify this account number? What are you trying to pay? And we'll say, who are you, you know, where are you from? So then we've got to call them and cancel it, you know, I mean, void it out, but.
So I guess I just had a follow-up to Fred's questions. Do you have any idea, Dana, how this company makes money then, if they, if I disagree?
They charge the fees. They charge the fees.
For the credit cards?
Two and a half percent they get, and then, and they get, three thousand nine hundred and fifty cents for every.
On every transaction?
Every transaction.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Three dollars for the electronic check.
Okay.
There, you know, a lot of, I don't look for how many towns they use. But the invoice cloud is another company. I mean, they're affiliated with quality and stuff like that. So they're all, you know, it's business that they're trying to build up more businesses.
Sure.
So, I mean.
But you're happy with the product?
I'm, yeah. Like I said, the other one had a few more things that were good, and I was, mm, I wasn't pressured, but I did, I did not like the fees at all being charged.
Yeah, well, those are upfront, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know.
Towns, on the towns act.
Right. And, and we're trying to offer a service. You want, you want that service, we provide it, you get paid for it.
Sure.
If, if that's your option. Otherwise, could we still pay checks?
Now, is that clear when people go to pay online? It's clear to them that they're going to get hit two and a half percent? If you use their MasterCard, it's three and a quarter or whatever?
Yeah, yeah. It's three dollars and ninety-five cents. It will be there, it will specify that. What I said before, it just defaulted at credit card.
Yeah.
People would automatically think.
That's the only option, right.
That's what they were paying. They put their card number in there like that.
Sure.
And because we do the mode of view of appearances, instant, well, instantly, it's go right away if it's a Visa debit because it's coming out of it.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll say, you can pay with Visa debit. Yeah, 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 and that's it. You look it up. You pay with your credit card. Well, my Visa card.
Yeah, they don't understand.
My MasterCard, use my debit card. It's, no, no, it's not the same.
Yeah.
And then they'll call them and say, I use my Visa card. Why did I get hit with two and a half percent?
Right.
So then we have to.
Right. So this will take away all those phone calls, basically wasting your time, when you could be doing other things.
It should be credit card, it should be debit card, and it should be e-check. And then, and like I said, and now.
And the fees are stated right under each one to use each one?
I believe they will be, but the difference now with the debit card is that they're accepting the MasterCard. So it shouldn't, that's the thing.
So there's not two different fees?
Debit card, we debit card.
Right, so debit card is a, is a
These are more MasterCard.
Flat fee, not the
Two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent, right.
Of your total bill.
Yeah, that's the credit card. But some people love that because they think they get their miles and whatever they want.
Right, right, there's a benefit to that.
Or they're getting to zero percent interest for a year on, with the checks.
Right, so they do it.
The credit cards that they can pay that off on and stuff like that, you know, whatever. We encourage that.
Whatever works for them, yeah.
We encourage that when they backlog with, and they need to, oh, I need to register my cars. It's anybody's, we're mandated by the state, you want eighteen percent a year, one and a half percent for money. Or a family member, anybody, it's cheaper than us, you know, we encourage that, to try to do that.
Sure.
And the debit is automatically is coming out?
Right out of the bank.
Right out of your bank account, whereas the master charge, you know, you got thirty, yeah, you got thirty days, you know?
Got it, thank you.
Is there any other questions? No? Great, thank you. So, you know, we discussed, and now we need to take action regarding the online tax payment agreement?
And I would suggest, now, for select woman, that, uh, they can be authorized to enter into this agreement in such form as approved by the town council.
And then we'll let the board know the, the tweaks, so that they're comfortable with it.
For instance, I want to make it clear, you know, a few things. One is, there's an attachment missing that wants to get there. I want to make it clear, uh, when the money's going to get deposited into this account.
We assume it's a three-day?
We have, I wanted to, I want to do that in writing, so they don't think we have seven, fourteen, anyone here.
So they're earning interest on the money and we're not?
Right, and I want compensation, uh, subject to this, as a schedule, so we know what that is. There's also the reference of one-time activation fee, and I want to make it clear that, you know, we're not going to pay that because already I assume pay that. So those two are myths, like that, make it clear that it sounds protective.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno?
Second.
Second by Al Bruno, discussion?
Point of order?
Sure.
Since this is a legal contract, I would suggest that the motion be more articulated, more detailed.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to approve the point and pay LLC e-payment services agreement as discussed, and allow town council to make the suggested modifications. How's that, Brian? Did that work?
Second.
Second by?
Oh, wait, oh, wait, you seconded it.
Seconded it, yeah.
Okay, all right. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Discussion and possible action regarding the generator bid. In your packet, you have a, um, list of the two RFPs that came in. One from A and J Generator and Equipment. It meets our technical specs, and it doesn't, but it did not meet our bid spec. The price was forty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars. And we have another bid from Huntington Power, which meets our technical specs, meets our bid specs, and the price is fifty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Tom, Amy is here to discuss and answer any questions you may have on that.
Come on up, Tom, say hello.
We've missed you, Tom.
And that's a well-lit Laurel Lane address, and you can see it from the satellite.
Holy heck, yeah. For those that, no, no, Tommy's house is throughout Christmas.
We love it.
Go ahead, sorry, we digressed.
We started this approximately two years ago. Our current generator, which was used here, died. We went into a rental for ten days, we stopped, things were running out. And then we went into COVID, and then the whole cash flow ended, so it's been, we weren't sure where we were going. We started back up, we're out of it. And of course, you see a price increase, what we originally were specing out, and that's extremely due to COVID and also on the backside of this, both of us we discussed with, had a sixteen to twenty delivered come from. For the older and older this generator. So that's what COVID has been, is arresting there in the public, is price increases and delays of receiving of commodities. Uh, generator size has increased. We had just got a fifty KW here, we're going to eighty KW. Because we're a project that was done a few years ago, we're an upgrade including the cooling, they added quite a bit to the actual side of the other one, or the, uh, units there. So that's basically what you're looking at, why price increase and, um, doing that.
Any questions?
So Tom, in your opinion, as our point person, this is non-negotiable, right? We, we need this for our community? Yeah.
And, and the other thing that happens is, and Rod Guy, who's our IT director for the town and the school site, he's done a tremendous job in upgrading, uh, the whole of clusters and mainframe equipment. So between the school side, the high school, and the town hall side, both sites see each other, one's a backup to each other. So this is key component, why generation needs to be getting closer.
Thank you.
Ms. Jamie, um, what specifically didn't meet the bid specs from A and J?
Uh, the middle and basic requirements as far as a, a check to go along with the proof, there was some other proof requirements that were necessary in that performance package. And, and though the, after stocking, we were, we were actually under the, what part of that? But again, uh, the way the bid specs were written, it had to include it in the LAs, it was open for this application.
Select for Stanek?
I have no questions.
Okay. I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready, Tommy? We must take possible actions on the generator bid right now. Rory?
Wish, I wish to port forward a motion to accept the bid from Huntington Power in the cost of fifty-two thousand eight hundred dollars?
Second.
Is that?
Yeah, to, to award the, uh, contract for the, uh, town hall generator, I think, to power the lowest qualified.
Oh, it's qualified, okay.
Yeah.
I amend my motion as such?
At hope, and not to exceed.
I think it's a flat amount, if it didn't buy.
Tommy, is there a chance that it could exceed that with work orders, change orders?
Not that we know, and, uh, change orders are not a perfect condition.
Okay. Okay. Better not. All right. Uh, I have a motion by Chris Bowen.
Second.
Second by Alan Bruno, discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five-zero. Thank you, Tommy and Dana. Recognitions and celebrations. So, on recognitions and celebrations, this is where we would normally, um, put in our awards. I do want to say, under recognitions, our Pop Warner Eight and Under wet, are regional? Nope, they're not regional. State, uh, state champions. They played against Rhode Island for the regional, and, and they lost, but they won. We have our football team that went into states. This is where we normally would recognize them. I know we are going to be giving out, uh, we will be giving out citation, proclamations, and the state will be giving out citations to both our Eight and Under, our swimmers, our volleyball team, um, as well as our football team in the upcoming meetings. Um, so we'll let you all know, and those are going to be happening as well. Also, if you see in your packet, there is a letter that was given to Chief Salkowski from Commander Fappiano. We, um, took out, well, I like to say sanitized a report.
Redacted.
Thank you. I say sanitized.
Very good choice of words.
You say redacted. Sanitize is a PPA term. Exactly. I would like to read, even though we put it into the minutes, I would like to read it into the record, if that's okay? Thank God you have a tape recorder going. This is to Chief Salkowski from, from Commander Fappiano. Uh, it's regarding a case twenty-one, one thirty-five, three-five. It happened in November eighth, twenty-twenty-one, is when this letter was sent to him. Says, on October twenty-one, twenty-one, officer from day shift and detective responded to, um, a call after the department received a nine-one-one call reporting that the male party from the, uh, called a friend from AA. The male party was depressed and told a friend that he was in the woods near his house with a gun and that he was going to kill himself. Officers quickly responded to the area, and we established a command post. With the suicide male's location unknown, officers observed the residence and surrounding wood line and a perimeter was quickly set up. Officer Santinelli was dispatched, was dispatching at the time and attempted to ping the male's phone to gather a location from him, and appeared that the cell phone was turned off. I also attempted to call the phone on scene, and the phone was turned off. Officer Oskowski assisted with attempting to locate the male, as he is familiar with the party as well as the member of the suicidal male's family. Officer Oskowski was able to make contact with an immediate family member who responded to the scene to assist. During this time, Officer Wilcox, along with Training Officer Fushion and Officer Erdman, were observing the residence while Officer Shook and Mara remained in the area of, on the perimeter. While on scene, Seymour Ambulance Chief Ri, uh, Brian Ryan responded to the scene and assisted with staging an ambulance to stand by in the area until the man was located and to assist in the event that emergency medical staff were needed. Inspector Matasovich was notified of the incident, and he, along with Detective Jasmine, responded to the scene to assist. While on scene, a male party exited the house, walking across the street, heading towards the woods on the riverside. Officers made contact with the male party as he was walking across the street, and he complied with officers' commands. He was quickly detained, and upon a search of his person, Officer Oskowski located a loaded gun in the small of his back. Officer Oskowski, being familiar with the individual, was able to get him to open and talk with the officers. He informed the officers that he had been depressed, upset, and he did mention that he wanted to kill himself. The handgun, as seized, and an NCIC check indicated, the male party had numerous weapons registered. During this time, Inspector Matasovich and Detective Jasmine were able to secure written consent to search the property for other weapons, and it was determined that a risk warrant would follow. The detective division was assisted by Officer Wilcox and Officer Fushion. And during the course of the investigation, no other weapons were found in the residence, and it appeared that a few of the weapons were previously reported as stolen in Ansonia. Ultimately, the suicidal male party was transported to Griffin Hospital on a police emergency examination request, a PER form, where he would be able to seek treatment and help. I would like to commend the officers and detectives involved. Through their extraordinary teamwork, exceptional professional skills, and conduct during this incident, they were able to get a male party the help and treatment that he very much needed. This is only one of the letters and one of the incidents that had happened. October thirtieth, there was a motorcycle accident on Derby Avenue. And if it wasn't for, um, one of our fast-acting officers, the gentleman would have lost his life. By the op?
Applied a tourniquet, I believe.
Yeah, she put the tourniquet on her life, and by applying that tourniquet, it saved the gentleman's life. I have seen, um, a lot of our, our police force, our police force is asked a lot of, and I would like to start with this board going to our police, uh, our Board of Police Commissioners. And commendations come from the Police Department, but letters for the police officers from our board get put into their personnel files. And I think it's important that we recognize the good that our men and women in blue do for our town and acknowledge how much they give of themselves. So I just wanted to let you guys know that that is what I'm going to do, and I will probably be going to their December meeting to present the letters to the officers here as well as the officer from the Derby Avenue incident. Um, and if any of you would like to go with, except for I can't have a quorum, just let me know.
Very good.
Okay. So that's that. I know, it's kind of long, sorry. It was heavy, but they, they deal with a lot. Um, we approve the meetings. Appointments in your file, in your folder packet, there's an appointments for January seventh, twenty-twenty-one. We will go one by one. Kurt normally does them line by, uh, just, these are appointments, anybody has any issues with them. But we're going to go one by one. Give everybody a chance.
I always had an issue with that, just for the record, but thank you for doing it one by one.
Okay. So, uh, Birchman Moses, PC Town Council, it's a reappointment for two years. Expiration date is twelve-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by, thank you, Pat Lombardi, second by Chris Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five-zero. Birchman Moses, PC Town Council Worker, Workman's Compensation, reappointment, two years, twelve-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by Pat, second by Chris Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five-zero. Birchman Moses, PC Town Council Labor, reappointment, two years, twelve-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by?
Seconded.
Chris Bowen, second by Pat Lombardi. All in favor?
Aye.
Or discussion, sorry, all in favor? Chair votes aye, motion, you?
I, you know what, I think I should probably abstain from all three, now that I'm thinking about it. I'm going to abstain from all three, okay? Yeah, I didn't catch that, sorry.
Yep. No, uh, selectman Bruno's abstention from, um, Town Council, Town Council, Workman's Comp, Town Council Lawyer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marino Zabel and Schellenberg, Town Council Land Use Boards, reappointment, two years, twelve-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by Al Bruno?
Seconded.
Second by Pat Lombardi, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five-zero. Ben Prado, Town Council WPCA, it's a reappointment, two years, twelve-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by Chris Bowen, second by Al Bruno, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five-zero. Shipman and Goodwin LLP, Town Council bounding, reappointment, two years, twelve-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by Al Bruno?
Seconded.
Second by Pat Lombardi, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries five-zero. Bean B Engineering, um, I chose to stay with Brian Asteriak, I think he's done really well with us. Very communicative, especially on the roads and everything. Town Engineer, reappointment, two years, twelve-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Discussion? So, so moved by Pat Lombardi, second, with Chris Bowen, sorry, discussion? Chair votes, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five-zero. Navis and Young, the engineer for the WPCA, it's a reappointment, two years, twelve-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by Al Bruno?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Fred Stanek, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five-zero. Priscilla Altorelli, Cultural and Arts, reappointment, three years, twelve-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
I move to reappoint Priscilla Altorelli to the Cultural and Arts Commission.
Fred's, motion by Fred Stanek, second by Al Bruno?
Discuss.
Discussion?
I have a feeling you were going to say the same thing.
I, I'm just questioning the year because it's three years, but you're twenty-twenty-three, you're not being connected.
Twenty-twenty-four, please note the change to twenty-twenty-four.
Okay?
Okay?
Just to be, just to be clear, we've got the term right, it's a three-year appointment?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five-zero. Rory Burke, Chief of Staff, reappointment, two years, twelve-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion?
Notice that was the first one.
Chair votes aye, motion? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Rob Van Egan, WPCA, reappointment, four years.
Second the motion?
Motion by Chris Bowen, second by Fred Stanek, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Rick Dumpko, Zoning Board of Appeals, it's a reappointment, four years.
So moved.
Motion by Pat Lombardi.
Seconded.
Second by Chris Bowen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, five zero. Kristen Hanowitz, Zoning Board of Appeals, it's an appointment for four years, it's a new appointment, twelve, seven, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Motion by Chris Bowen. Second by Al Bruno, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. John Duke, Zoning Board of Appeals, it's an appointment, four years, twelve, seven, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Al Bruno.
Seconded.
Second by Chris Bowen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, five zero. Paul Wedowitz, Zoning Board of Appeals, all of planet, it's an appointment for four years, twelve, seven, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Motion by Chris Bowen.
Seconded.
Second by Pat Lombardi, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstains? No's? Chair votes ayes, five zero. Sven Rittweger. He's on the Parks and Recs, it's an appointment for two years, twelve, seven, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by Al Bruno.
Seconded.
Second by Chris Bowen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Anne Marie Drgonas, Ordinance Committee, reappointment, two years, twelve, seven, twenty twenty-three.
Move the appointment?
Second.
Fred Stanek, motion, Chris, Al Bruno, second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I abstain, note to Chair four zero one, thank you. Bob Finley, Ordinance Committee, it's a reappointment, two years, twelve, seven, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Discussion? Oh, motion by Pat Lombardi, second by Chris Bowen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Fred Stanek, Ordinance Committee, it's an appointment of two years, twelve, seven, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by Chris Boenow, second, Chris Bowen, second by Al Bruno, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
I abstain.
Chair votes aye, motion four zero one, motion Fred, no, Fred Stanek's abstention. Trish Denka, she can't say no. Tax Incentive Subcommittee, reappointment, two years, twelve, seven, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by Pat Lombardi, second by Chris Bowen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Sorry you missed the meeting, Trish. Chris Bowen, Tax Incentive, it's a reappointment, two years.
I'll move the appointment.
Twelve, seven, twenty twenty-three. Fred Stanek.
Seconded.
Second by Al Bruno, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Chair votes aye, four zero one, note Chris Bowen's abstention. Bob Finley, sucks that he's not here either, Tax Incentive Subcommittee, reappointment, two years, twelve, seven, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Pat Lombardi, second by Al Bruno, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. See, I told you, Mr. Stanek, this is such a fun board. Tax refunds and abatement.
Still withholding judgment.
Uh, for any, you have the tax abatement from Christine Genetti, Jesus is a tax collector. Please look it over to make sure that you have no issues.
And that your name does not appear on this list.
My name does not appear on this list.
No, no, me.
Oh, that your name does not appear on this list, or your family members. Or friends. Distanced relatives. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Al Bruno.
Seconded.
Second by Pat Lombardi, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. We discussed, the discussion and items for consent agenda. Discussion passed. So on the, on your packet, you have a proposed ordinance. And this proposed ordinance will get moved to the Ordinance Committee. I will read the proposed ordinance into the record. All references in any ordinance, regulation code, executive order, policy, or other document generated by the government of the town of Seymour to first select man and/or first select men are hereby amended to substitute the term first select person and select persons. And all references in this ordinance, regulations, codes, executive orders, policy, and other documents to the term is shall be substituted with the phrase his or her, to the extent that the use of the term first select person and select persons is inconsistent with the use of terms first select man and select men as used in the town Seymour Charter or general statutes. Regulations, policies, executive orders, directives, or other documents passed, approved, or otherwise utilized by the state of Connecticut or any governmental department or agency thereof, the term first select person and select persons shall have the same meaning as first select man and first select men as otherwise used in the town of Seymour Charter are used by the state of Connecticut and such documents. I just became the first select woman. Sorry. Okay. Discussion? So this is the proposed ordinance, as you know, Karen was a big person to make sure that we are all equally recognized. She even wanted the first select woman to be there, and that's why you said first select woman. So we're going to propose this ordinance, move this proposed ordinance to the Ordinance Committee?
I'll make a motion to refer the proposed ordinance to the Ordinance Committee.
Motion by?
Seconded.
Fred Stanek, second by Al Bruno, discussion?
This is long overdue.
There's, there's no issue with this in my mind.
Okay.
I have spoken to State Representative Nicole Kalerdistitria about why, asked why the state of Connecticut, the legislature, has not taken this similar action in the statute, with regard to statutes. She said she wants to propose something in the next session. So this is something we can start at the local level.
Any other questions, Thomas? I'm waiting for Brian, because he's reading something. Okay. Right.
Okay.
Yeah. But if the first select person wanted to be called the first select man or the first select woman, they could.
Great.
I'm only the second woman to hold this position. The cute one. She's over there. All right.
I'm sure there'll be further discussion and further edits in the committee.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. I like to add to, have a motion to add to the agenda, the Board of Selectmen twenty twenty-two meeting schedules. Motion by Al?
Seconded.
Second by Chris. Discussion?
No, just, I would just note that I think it would be appropriate if we could get our depository clerk, being our town clerk, to send out a notification to all boards and commissions very early in November to get their schedule of meetings for the following year submitted in a timely manner, so that they are meeting compliance with one dash twenty, excuse me, one dash two twenty-five of the Freedom of Information Act. That would be my suggestion.
Good idea.
She did send it out to you, did she? She sent it out without the?
For the Board of Finance, right?
No, well, it was sent out, I thought she sent it out to all boards.
Nope.
So because this will not be our January, December, our December twenty-first meeting, but our January fourth meeting is not thirty days, so our January fourth meeting will be a special meeting.
Special meeting, yep.
So our agenda will be set, we will not be able to add or change our agenda that day.
That's correct.
Okay. Rory? Yeah, you're right. Okay.
So just a question for Rory, if I may.
Go ahead.
So none of these dates, none of these dates conflict with any legal holidays, that town hall would be closed? Okay.
Yeah, we need to be a little bit better on getting, getting that notice out to get our annual meeting scheduled done, and we need a little tickler in a calendar or something because that.
Public works did not get one.
Yeah.
That's neither here nor there.
Well, we need to remind all our boards.
That's neither near nor here.
In fairness.
Boards and commissions that I have served on previously, we have always done it in November so that we avoid the thirty-day rule, if you will.
Sure, well, it is a rule, yeah. Yeah, now we gotta have, to have a special meeting, really for no reason, but lesson learned and.
Exactly.
That's it.
Okay.
Nothing can't be fixed.
First select woman's report?
So do we need to approve those?
Oh, we need to approve these meetings.
Yeah, we need to approve it.
Have an approval, a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Chris Bowen, second by Al Bruno.
That's twice.
That's twice, I know. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Oh, we have to go into the executive session.
Yeah, I was wondering what's going on with that.
Okay, have a motion to go into an executive session, I don't want to. And Rory. Yep. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Pat Lombardi, second by Chris Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, five. See, I mean.
I will note, Fred, I tried to watch the big meeting, the big meeting on Zoom before the two thousand twenty school year.
Gene.
In August?
Yeah. I did.
I have a whole new level of respect for that board.
Yeah, we got beat up pretty good.
Yeah.
Oh, when the woman came in screaming?
No, I was thinking of the one during the height of the pandemic.
Oh.
I didn't get a chance to watch that meeting.
Yeah, my wife was like, I guess that woman was right near my wife here, and she said, oh my God.
Well, we were at, I don't know if you, we were at Jimmy's, because I forget what we had going on.
So you might want to wait. Rory, what is this know before training, I'm not going?
Are you coming back?
Paul had to go in and talk to her.
What if I just do it?
Let her know, I thought the police were coming to escort.
People are nuts.
I do like that I shrink. I got fifteen minutes. See the schedule that you put in front of me? Okay, go ahead.